Call us, meeting the county commissioners to order. Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, the which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everybody today. First item on our agenda. Have you had a chance to review your minutes in the February 15th meeting?
I'm going to approve them.
Okay, the motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the minutes of the February 15th meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, three ayes, Jane. Okay, department reports. First up is Mr. Ryan Siggers, Chief Probation Officer with the 144. Ryan?
Afternoon. We have selected a Miss Darian Sparks to fill in the juvenile position that was allocated from the council a few weeks ago, about a month ago. Jenna Turner is retiring in August, and we have a surplus of monies that we have, was budgeted for, and then we have people retire and resign after the budgets were approved. So the council agreed to let me use some of that money to have someone hired immediately to train alongside Jenna, because her job is vast and pretty complex. So we've done hiring, and we've selected Miss Darian Sparks. She's a local girl. She currently works for Centerstone. She does in-school counseling with grade school aged children. She's going to have a master's degree in forensic psychology by the end of the summer, and she seems like she'll be a great fit. So I'd ask that you approve her hiring.
Okay, is this full-time position?
Yes.
And then she's replacing Jenna.
Yeah, and August 1st will be Jenna's last day, and she's going to train alongside Jenna until that day. Kind of the idea that the balance of work will slowly shift to where Darian takes everything over and is ready to hit the ground running for that first day.
The council's already gave their okay on that?
Yes.
I'm going to approve Ms. Sparks for the position.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the 144 request for probation department. Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane. Anything else, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, Health Department, Matt Sherp here on the immunization grant.
Okay. Thank you. I handed you a copy of the letter from the State Department of Health about the availability of fundings for immunizations. And I would like to ask you guys permission to apply for the grant. It's spelled out here as for what the grant is for. And then also, we have attached, or I have attached, an outline of what our application is. So it'll show how we will meet the goals of the grant. And our goal is to increase the amount of kids receiving their childhood immunizations in Fayette County. And our goal of the Health Department is to improve the health of the whole county. So this would be a great help to have these folks in this position at the Health Department for someone to go out and really work on getting more kids immunized.
And this grant is not COVID-related?
Correct.
This is the regular, normal vaccinations that were...
Right, yeah. Not COVID, it's not COVID. So it'll be the childhood immunizations that we're really trying to increase just the general health of our community and the kids, and getting them ready for school and making sure they don't come down with preventable diseases.
Now, do I understand right that this would actually pay for vaccines?
This would pay, no, this would just pay for the vaccine administrator or someone to be in charge of the program to help get vaccines given. Our vaccines are already provided through, if you do not have insurance, the vaccines are already provided by the state. So there is no cost of vaccines if you do not have insurance. If you have insurance, we do bill the insurance company. So there's no charge, out-of-pocket cost, if you come to the Health Department though. So there's never any out-of-pocket costs. So that's one advantage of the County Health Department.
Okay. I'm sure that would help a number of people.
Mm-hmm. And we're working now on getting some, you're going to see, we've got some other funding available for advertising. We're getting ready to do more advertising. You're going to see a billboard up here on Eastern here soon that states, that County Health Department tells people what our services are and our phone number to try to get just people to realize, you know, that we're here, we're here to provide services that, you know, people need, so don't hesitate to call and come see us. So like, my goal since taking over this position, and COVID's kind of put a damper on it, is to move us, Fayette County historically has been 92 out of 92 as far as health standards in the state of Indiana. And my goal, taking over this position and working with Dr. White, is to move us up from 92 up the ladder. And we've been moving up, so we went from 92 and we've moved up to like 89. So we want to keep moving on up that ladder. So this would be one tool that we could use to do that.
Sure. Is our grant administrator up to date on this?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Joe Leece has been involved since the start.
Okay.
And this, and like I said, we haven't received it. This is just, I just want permission to apply for it, so. Because it is, it is not a guaranteed grant like many of our other grants are. Or like, you apply for it, you get it. This one's one we're looking after for, so we can use it for our community.
Well, we don't know until we try, do we?
Mm-hmm. And hopefully, we can transition from the COVID testing. So we have someone available, Kelly's doing our COVID testing now, so hopefully the COVID stuff will go away, and we can move her into this position where she could be, do this for us, and she'd be a great fit for it.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
Mm-hmm.
This grant's due on the 3rd?
Yep, so I've got it, I've got to go over, and we'll go over it one more time. If it's, if you approve it, we'll go over our grant application and get it sent in tomorrow with the details of what we will be doing are outlined.
I'm going to approve the immunization grant.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the application for this vaccination grant for the Health Department. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane.
All right, I appreciate it, so if there's anything, if everything else is going good at the Health Department, we're still doing some vaccinations, it's not near the level we were, so we were still busy this afternoon with vaccinations. Our testing is quite significantly lower, so that's a positive sign, hopefully, for the COVID, so there are still our positives out there, so people still need to take some precautions. Even though we're seeing smaller numbers, we still are seeing some positives, so people still need to take care of it. That's it, so thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, Community Corrections. Michelle Dudley's here with 144 request.
I need for approval for a part-time facility officer, Matt Reed. I had sent you guys this morning, emailed you copies. Matt was employed with us in 2013, and I'd like to hire him back full, or part-time. I've offered him a position, and then I sent you three others that I haven't interviewed yet but potentially may hire. I'd like to get them approved too, in case I need them in a pinch.
Did you say it was Matt Reed?
Reeve.
Reeve, that's right.
R-E-E-V-E.
I looked at those a ball ago, and at least, right now, you seem to have a pool to choose from, or here recently, you had nothing, you know?
Well, I only have the other three because two of them came from the Sheriff's Department. Joey sent me their resumes. He interviewed them, but they didn't hire them at the time. And then Kelly sent me one from dispatch. So that's the only reason I got three extra.
I'll make a motion that will approve your request for the 144, hire Matt Reed part-time, and your other three that you also can hire. Here's the question.
Second.
We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the 144 request for Community Corrections for Matt Reed and the other three potential employers. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane.
Thank you.
You have anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thanks. Bill Mackey, you got anything for us today?
Yep. Got a couple things. I've got the contract for design work on Bridge 32 was reviewed by Endot, and so everything's okay, so I need your guys' signature. That's the front page, and then the signature will be on the next. They reviewed, I submitted it a couple weeks ago, they reviewed it and told me to move forward with it. That's the design work on Bridge 32 out on 50 North. SJCA's doing it. And y'all need to sign there where it's marked.
Okay, and this is a consulting contract between us and...
SJCA.
SJCA, okay.
Design of Bridge 32.
Okay. Pass is done.
And then also, this is a letter I'm going to submit to Endot, asking for money, pay 80% of that fee.
Oh.
Because you don't get that awarded in the original, when we put in the information it got awarded to construction and the inspection, that million dollars we got last year, that's not included, so they always have this separate. So we've got to ask for 80% of that dollar amount. So I need to submit that letter with all the signatures on it, and, you know, ask them for money, then I'll move forward after all this runs through. So hopefully by the late summer, early fall, they can start doing whatever's on to work on it.
Okay. While they're looking that over, Bill, I've got a question for you. On Bridge 90.
Mm-hmm.
I had someone ask yesterday when we will have to actually close the road.
We have had a pre-construction meeting. In fact, I just, I just got an invoice from Endot on Friday that I, on our 20% plus, it might be a ball mess, I think. I think it might, on the back of that contract, I think I might have had it all included there, a couple pages in our, what did I do with that? Thought I had with it. Though we got to have a pre-construction meeting first, and then contractor will tell us when they're going to come in. But regardless, by the end of this month, they got to get in there and cut down some trees on each side because of the bats. They got to be done by March 30th. So, but they won't close the road and do that, so. But I've heard two different, we'll find out pre-construction meeting. Paul Rowe got the contract, and I've heard two different things. I was told that they possibly may not start till June, but then I was also told they may go ahead and start earlier, because they have some work to finish. Oh, here it is. They may start on time. Now, they get 150 days of closure regardless without paying penalties, so it's up to them when they start. So it may be immediately in April, it may not be till June, until we have a pre-construction meeting, I won't know for sure. But I just got the invoice, $413,000, $413,090 and 11 cents is what I've got to send Endot for our share. But that includes $152,000 overage. But I'm going to ask for 80% of that $152,000 back, just like that letter right there. I'll have another letter for y'all to, once I figure out, I'll check with Endot and see if I need to pay this before I can ask for money back. I don't know, you know, if I need to pay this invoice before I can ask for 80% reimbursement on the $152,000 that went above the, that we were awarded back in '16. We were rewarded $1.3 million, and it come up the 1.4. So, so I don't know about that. Until we have a pre-construction meeting, I mean, we're not, we're set up. You're all welcome to sit in. I don't know if it'll be virtual, or if we'll actually do something out there, or what. We'll know more than, I've heard two things from the company, until we actually sit down and talk. I'm not sure what's going to happen.
It might be May, it might be June, it might...
It could be as late as June, what they said originally. Then I heard from the same guy that was talking to them, it may be, they may start on time in April. I don't think they've decided, because they have other work to finish from last year, and they haven't set up when they're going to do that yet. So it's going to depend on, regardless, they get 150 days, and there's an end date, so.
Okay.
So if we have nothing to talk, pre-construction meeting happens, we'll know more later.
Okay. All right.
Say aye, Steve, y'all sign the contract and that letter, so I can ask.
Do you need a motion to approve the signing of the contract and also the letter from Bridge 32?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the consulting contract for Bridge 32, along with the approval of the letter requesting reimbursable funds. Is there any further question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Three ayes, Jane. You want us to sign these right now?
Sure, because I need to get them back.
Okay. Jane, will you need copies?
I will.
He just said he needs one.
Okay. There you go, Bill.
Great. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Highway Department? Jay, you got anything for us today?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We started out Friday, we started doing gravel roads and getting them ready, so we could patch this week, and we finished up yesterday. I've got five crews out patching today. I've only left three people for moving patch in and loading the trucks, plus my mechanic. So we're going to probably do that all week, and get all the holes we can get done. Hopefully, we'll get most of it knocked out by the end of the week, before the weather starts getting bad again.
Yeah, I just hope so. These potholes just show up overnight.
Well, the freezing and thawing kill them, they're just causing spots everywhere.
Yeah.
No, I don't care what road you go down, you'll find it.
That's for sure. Well, okay. You got anything else going on?
We haven't heard anything on distributor truck yet. We're still waiting on that guy to come down and talk to us, the one from Etna. And we got the other guy supposed to come down and put that different, instead of an eye, we're going to put like a GPS unit on it, because we figured, we think the eye is what's causing all the problem, because it's not reading the road right, not letting it shoot the amount of oil we need on the ground. Because it says we're getting right amount, but we're not getting the right amount.
Yeah.
So something's not reading right inside that old truck. I'll let you know by next meeting whether we find anything or not.
Well, I hope this works.
Yep. Because not, not worth anything the way it is, because none of the roads we shot last year held any oil.
Yeah.
They didn't hold any gravel on the road. You can see it on everyone. I think there was one where we double-bladed it, it did pretty good. But all the singles did not hold.
So, sorry, do you have, do you have any idea what it would cost to replace that? If, is it something that can be fixed or repaired?
I could find out, because I'd have to call Etna and ask them, because the truck, the truck is an 85, so it's 37 years old. And the tanks was put on there in 2000, so that's 22. And you don't want to put another new outfit on that old truck. You'd have to go truck and everything, so I'd just, I can get quote and find out. But you're probably looking up close to the big tank we got, hopes of $300,000, probably to do it right. Because everybody you see, all of them I've seen on the computer have been 2,000 gallon tanks. See, ours is almost a 4,000 gallon tank. That way you can empty a tanker, there are two poles, you don't have to have a truck sitting there waiting on you, because they charge you for how much time they sit there and wait on you. That was the idea of the big tank. But you have to have them made special. But I'll find out and let you know. But have anything else?
I don't have anything. Do you? Got anything else for Dave? No, that's it, Jay. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. IT Department, Michael, do you have anything for us today? Okay. Dave Rickman, do you have anything for the animal shoulder?
I do have, I do have my muffin fork, because I didn't have it early. This month, the previous month, we had 25 total. This month, we had nine, with the public present, with the public turning in animals, we had nine more. So I came up to 43 animals total. I had to end up putting four of them down. We sold eight dogs and cats. We had three dogs and cats claimed. Left 28 on hand. I had owner's request for two dogs to be put down because of the oldness and they're sick. One cat that we put down for an owner. We picked up four dead, four cats that were dead and two other ones. We tried to do that too, you know? Today, we picked up, my kennels, you know, ones I give, keep room in there, rotating. I try to keep as many as I can. Well, today, we picked up four dogs. Then we, and I had an owner that, one of her dogs turned mean, had to put it down. Plus, then we picked up one last night that was a bite case, and it's, it was a stray, so nobody claimed it. So we're completely full. But, you know, we're doing what we can and go from there. But other than that, we're doing pretty good, I think. You have any questions?
I don't. Do you have anything for Dave?
No.
Well, just keep on keeping on, David, I guess.
Well, I'm trying. You got a key for me yet? A key?
Oh. I told you to keep reminding me.
Well, I'm trying.
I'll hunt, I'll hunt for it while I'm here in the building today.
Okay, I appreciate that.
That's why I tell you to keep reminding me.
Well, sometimes I've got to keep reminding my own self on stuff.
I'll see if I can find that today.
All right, yep. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
County Extension, do you have any good news for us today?
Always good news.
Okay.
Things are happening down there. All right, first of all, you should have all received a 2021 impact report, so Tracy, that was one of the things when you first started that you were asking about, so hopefully you guys were able to take a look at that. As I mentioned in the letter to you, Fayette County's been covered as a feature article in that the last two years. This year, we didn't, decided to give somebody some accolades this year, I guess, so. But many of the programs that were represented within that booklet are things that we have done, and I think I mentioned that in the letter. So we're moving forward into 2022. We have enrollments for 4H. We've got 337 youth ages 3rd through 12th grade enrolled, and for many members, ages kindergarten through second is 86. Those enrollments are down about 25 to 30 from last year, not unusual across the state. I'm not concerned with our numbers, I feel like percentage-wise, it's not too bad, so I'm pleased with that. And we will still have rolling enrollments come in. We always have some stragglers after the January 15th deadline, which is fine, they can still do that. We have that soft deadline just because that's when we roll over our systems, start sending notifications out for everybody with the new ID days, workshops, that kind of, excuse me, that kind of thing. We actually had three, I've talked to three families this week who have not been at 4H before, and they're interested, so I've had them come in the office, talk to them about the program, helping them get enrolled there while they're in the office. So those are positive things, I think that we're just getting out even more about 4H here in Fayette County, so hopefully we keep the numbers moving forward. Some events we've got coming up, so we did a, John and Tracy Burns, John has an airplane down at the airport, and he came to me wanting to do a specialty club, which in 4H, we call that a spark club. Those are just special interest clubs that focus really on one, one subject really intensely. And he wanted to do an aerospace. So we came up with dates, we're meeting once a month. Because we're meeting at the airport, we had to keep enrollment limited to 10. We put the enrollment out, in two days, we had it full, and then we have a full class on a waiting list. So that was super exciting for us. So the first class happened in February, there'll be February, March, April, May. We're going to have the second class going ahead starting next Monday. So that was really positive for us. You never know when those things come up, what the interest is going to look like, so we were super excited about that. Art club, last year, we started a thing with the art association that went over very well with different art classes for youth. A lot of those projects can be taken as 4H projects. So they want to do about four of them again this year with us, so we're going to partner with them again. We still have some grant money left with them that's going to help keep the cost down for youth that want to do that. Those, the first one will be stained glass art, March 19th, so we'll start advertising that to our youth probably tomorrow or Thursday. Annual meeting is coming up, so all Extension offices are charged with holding a public annual meeting every year. Ours will be, no, excuse me, March 29th. You're invited as well. I mean, date night, come on. So here's an invite for all of you. So we're really excited to be able to have our guest speaker, Katie Stam Erk. She's a former Miss America and a 4H alumni from Seymour, Indiana, so she's going to be our guest speaker. During Extension annual meeting, we do partner, which is common in most counties, we partner with Soil and Water Conservation District. They hold their sort of annual meeting, we do ours, and then we do the guest speaker. Food will be provided. There is RSVP required by March 15th, and $10 payable at the door, just simply to help cover costs, is what that's for. But we will share our accomplishments from 2021 in Extension, and our goals for the year 2022. So we'll have more detailed information, and the types of things that we share with you at our meetings, we'll be sharing with the general public as well at this meeting. So you are all invited, all welcome to attend. The public at large is invited to attend as well. Just RSVP, so we got food. And the final thing to share with you is that we've got, last year, we did an Andes Project, which was a women in agriculture program. We held that jointly with Union County We held that jointly with Union County last year, and we had 11 women attend. It's a six weeks, six week course, just to cover subjects that, you know, maybe women aren't either comfortable with or comfortable in a large setting. So we do try and keep the classes small. It's a six week, three hour course. It went well last year, even with COVID. Like I said, we had the 11 women. This year we're combining with Franklin County, Union Fayette Franklin. It'll be held at Franklin County, reach a new audience with some more southern counties and spread the word there. That will start in the end of March. So I don't know what the registrations look like. That's going through Franklin County and I didn't get to call them before the meeting. But another program that we hope is successful. That is the updates I have for you today. Any questions or? And Tracy, we still don't, we're waiting to hear from the Development Office to schedule our next Extension Board meeting, so I'll keep you updated on it. Probably the end of March, early April.
Have you had any luck with your position down there for your?
It was posted a week ago. Since I'm not the manager of that position, I don't see applications as they come in. My boss sees that. And I don't know if we've had any applications yet. But I know they wait until about four or five applications show up. And then Human Resources at Purdue filters those, Program Directors then filter those. And then my boss and I are able to see them. So they go through some processes before I'm even able to take a look at them, so. But it did open up. Last Monday officially went online. So Purdue Careers, if people want that, they can search for Purdue Careers and that'll show up.
All right, that's good.
Anything else?
I've been looking through my seed catalogs in recent days. And it would help if you could tell us when the last frost of the season.
Ooh, no, no, I'm not going on record for any of that.
Well, if you figure it out, you come up and let us know.
I'll let you know.
Well, thanks for coming in, Heather.
Of course.
You're doing a good job for us.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. Job is great, I'm enjoying it and I enjoy working with all of you guys as well. Oh, thank you, Jane, how could I forget that? We have a Spring Into 4H event, March 12th, next Saturday at Expo Hall. It's an open house for people who are already in 4H, who are interested in 4H, who have no idea what 4H is, to introduce the community and really promote the 4H program. So we are hoping to get some more enrollments from that. Current 4H members will come, they'll collect their record books from last year. They'll get, the new 2022 project book came in Friday. Those will be picked up. That is the book that has the rules and regulations for all of the projects. Completion pens. There'll be vendors there for 4H members that purchase feed, bedding kind of things for livestock, about three or four vendors there. We will have, what else, Jane? Sorry, I don't know why I didn't write that down, but we've got lots of things going. Oh, the National Guard is bringing an inflatable bungee run, so we'll have that, it's some fun. Puppy Love is gonna be there with some of their dogs in their club. The Horse and Pony Group is gonna be there. I'm not sure if they're bringing horses there, hopefully not, they, they'll. I'll make sure they keep them outside. But that's a big event we've been planning for since the fall. And hopefully we have a good turnout for that, so that'll be next Saturday at Expo. So tend to them, public is welcome.
Well, while you're here, would you like to say anything about the 2022 plat books?
Oh, yes. So 20, the last time plat books were created for Fayette County was 2018. We, we have put in an order for 2022 plat books. Those should be here end of April. If anybody wants a plat book, they're welcome to call our office, reserve one, and then we'll call when they come in, so people don't have to keep guessing. We probably have 25 pre-orders already. We've ordered 200, I believe. I anticipate selling out quicker than we have in the past, just because of the interest that's been coming up with those, so. Yeah, hopefully April, we will post that probably in the newspaper and on our social media pages when those actually do arrive and come in. They're $20 a piece as well. Okay, you guys given me all my things that I need to talk about, I forgot all the stuff.
Those plat books used to be $2.
Did they?
Yeah, a long time ago.
Not today.
It's before our time.
Before our time, that's right, Joe.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to?
I think that's all I have. Jane, is that all I have? Thanks for the reminder. If you guys got any questions, stop by, we're happy to, to talk. I know Tracy is our liaison, you've been down there many times, we appreciate your communication with us, and we'll keep at it.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome, you guys have a good day, you bet.
Okay, that's all our department heads that are here today. Leo, do you have anything for us today? Leo is here from Jenson and Spanz, he inspects our bridges for us. Are you, everything okay?
Yeah, I, I don't have any.
Okay. Dick, do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you for signing the contract. We look forward to working with you guys this year.
Okay, well, we know you'll do a good job. County Attorney, do you have anything for us today?
I don't believe so.
Okay, that's usually a good thing.
That's always a good thing.
Yeah. Mail, anybody have any mail you want to share?
I don't.
Okay. Ain't you got any old business?
Not yet.
I don't know if we can call this old business or new business, but I, I got a couple of things for us. November the 19th, 2019, we approved a farm lease agreement with Dane Savoy. We rented him 65 and a half acres on property the county owns up here on the Waterloo Road for $175 a acre. That contract was a two-year contract with an option for a third year if both parties agree. And it's getting close to plan. And we have not addressed this. So I, we, we really need to let Dane Savoy know, or at least find out if he has, if he wants to use the, the third year option or not at that price. And whether or not we're willing to do that. So, you know, we need to make up our mind if we wanna, if we're agreeable to extend this contract a year. And if we are, we need to find out if he is. And if not, then we'll have to bid the thing out. And we'll have to do it pretty quickly because mid-8, we're gonna be here before you know it. So I wanted to bring that up and see what you two thought about it.
I think if he wants a third year, go ahead and bid it for next year.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. It's so close to.
Yeah, it is getting close. Okay. Well, I don't have any contact information for Dave Savoy. That, that should be, that should be available if we could find the actual contract that we made a couple of years ago with Jane.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll reach out to Mr. Savoy and see if he wants to utilize the third year option. And if he does, that takes care of that. I'll let you know what he says. Another thing is the cemetery mowing contract. And Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that contract is for $23,000 a year. I, I'm just going by memory, sometime that's not the greatest. It's gonna be, and, and that contract runs from April to October. And it also was a, I think it was a two-year, do you remember, was that a two-year contract? Yeah, we gave an option for, we, we did.
Yeah, that's why I'm pulling it up real quick.
Yeah, we, we gave an option for that, an option to, for another year. Now, I, I have heard from the guy that does the mowing. And, and he is, he's willing to, he's okay with a one-year extension on his current contract. We've been all language and everything as it is. And, and that's if, if we are. And if we're not, then we, we have to rebid that thing. Jay McAtee is the guy that does the, the mowing for us, he's the contract holder. And he's done a good job. I mean, I, I've got, I've had no complaints whatsoever about his work. So, do you have a feeling, do you, do you want to extend that contract to 2022 or not?
Fine.
Yeah, I think that's good. Is he also the one doing the county ones, like the Pioneer ones?
The Pioneer Cemeteries, that's, that's what this contract is for. That's, in your neighborhood, he takes care of Old Orange. And. The Wright Cemetery, they're on the Bird Sanctuary, they're the two closest to you. I don't think the Wright Cemetery, see, I said Wright Cemetery, did I? It's not the Wright Cemetery, it's the Gray Cemetery. Wright Cemetery doesn't get regular attention. So, but if we wasn't doing this, nobody else, it wouldn't get done. So. We probably should, Jeff, we probably should make that official, shouldn't we?
So, yeah, and I, Jane pulled up the contract and we were reviewing it, and it doesn't give us the option if both parties mutually agreed it could, to extend that contract through this year. So if you guys are willing to do so, I would make a motion and, and as long as he's willing to do so, we can take that contract.
Okay. I'll move to extend the contract for one more year.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to extend the Pioneer Cemetery mowing contract with Jay McAtee for one more year for the year mowing season 2022. Any further questions? All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. I'll notify Jay McAtee today and let him know that we're gonna honor the contract this season. I think that's it. That's all I have under old business.
Do we need to extend Dane's farm contract? Make it a motion? I'll move to extend Savoy's one more year.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to extend the farm lease agreement between the county and Dane Savoy for one more year. All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. We'll, we'll get ahold of Mr. Savoy, and if he's amenable, then it's done. If he's not, we'll have to start forward again. But I know that Jay McAtee is, does want to extend the mowing contract, so all I need to do is notify him. That's all I have under old business. New business? Either one of you got anything under new business? Well, I have one thing here. We just got notified today that we're gonna have, at the end of the week, we're gonna have a vacancy on the library board. And that's an appointment that we have to make. So if you have, have any, anyone that's interested in serving there, they would have to. Sarah Plow is resigning from the library board Friday this week. And she has, her normal term would expire in June 30, 2023. So this appointment would be to fill the unexpired term that she currently holds. So hopefully, if, if we can get some willing candidates, maybe we can take care of this for our next meeting. Okay? Also, as a reminder, tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock, a couple of DLZ representatives are gonna be down here. We'll discuss some proposed changes to the floor plan of the Dollar General project.
Is that 2 o'clock, is that right?
2 o'clock, yeah. There's one thing, we had a, we managed to have a brief discussion about this, something that has been brought to our attention from the clerk's office. Do you, you want to have a discussion on that today, or would you rather let it? Let it lay for a few more days or what?
I'd like to, till our next meeting.
Okay.
I agree, we should table this until our next meeting.
Okay, we'll do that. We, we haven't had a, a real opportunity to sit down and discuss that in detail. And there's more to it than what some people might think, so. We'll just table it till the next meeting. Okay. That's all I have. Is there any patron concerns today? I think that.
Probably the payroll and claims.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to prove claims and payroll. All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. That concludes your agenda.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm going to adjourn, thank you all very much.